Call to order this special meeting in Beverly City Council, Monday, July 13th, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers?
Here.
Brady?
Here.
Hausman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
I am here.
Councilor Hausman, could you please lead us in the pledge of...
Yes, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. We'll go right into our general vote of resolutions. I would entertain a motion to accept a late file from on order number 164 from Council Flowers and Council Rand.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes.
Either Council Flowers or Council Rand?
Thank you, President Guanci, and thank you to my colleagues, our colleagues on the council. The resolution that you received today was obviously, as we just voted, was received as a late file. And so for that reason, I wanted to mention upfront that it would be, I think, preferable for Council Rand and for me, that we wanted to introduce it today, make sure that you could get it in front of you, because as you know, we're in special meetings now in the summer. And so our time is running close, and this is an important issue, we felt, that we wanted to get before the council. But because you received it as a late file, we'd like you to have time to review it and think about it. And so if councillors would feel comfortable voting tomorrow, like, we would be extremely comfortable having it discussed and voted on tomorrow. This is a resolution that is in support and a way for the council, if we so choose, to offer our voice in support of work that's being done by the mayor and our Department of Health right now in around declaring systemic racism a public health issue. And so the mayor, I know, has been working on this and will be working with Bill Burke further on it and addressing ways in which our city, our community can both underscore this reality that years of systemic racism also create real and ongoing public health challenges for people of color in our community. And so Council Rand and I have drafted this resolution that allows for the council to have a voice in support of that, both that truth and that work, if we so choose. So I don't know, Mr. President, if it would be more appropriate for us to read the resolution tomorrow, or what you feel would be best.
Yeah, I think I'd give everybody 24 hours to digest it, and then read it tomorrow, and then we'll have a...I'm going to be absent tomorrow, so we'll have Council Rand read it with you, and then ask for a motion to approve, and people can make their comments tomorrow night.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Great work, ladies. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:05 on order number 146. Ms. Kent, could you please call, read that order?
I think you need to read the script first.
Oh, shit. Oh, sorry. Thank you. I'll read the script right now. And Ms. Kent gave me a hard time, well, I gave her a hard time off-camera. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, July 13th, 2020, in summer. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly, a live stream by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via Beverly BevCam YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons who participated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I heard everybody answer to the rolls, so the council is here. Introduction to remote meeting, meaning there's open meeting of Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public access, because we do have two public hearings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that there are some attendees participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I guess I'm reading this a little late. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceeding. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand, and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereon and a vote thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may, by a majority of the vote, order any matter pending before the subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forth return for full counsel. So that's what we'll do, as we've been doing, we'll vote everything on the floor. And to do that, we need Ms. Kent to take a roll call vote, and a majority has to agree. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes.
Meeting ground rules for public hearings. We have two public hearings, one for 7:05, one for 7:15. I will introduce each speaker after the council...well, this is a little different. So I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motion. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the "Mute or unmute" icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing *6 on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties in strictly the city council. Chat function is not for public comment. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please state your name and affiliation before speaking, and your address if you're a member of the public. Regarding public comment, I'll ask first members of the public who wish to speak to identify the name and addresses only. Once I have everyone that speaks, then I ask everybody to keep their comments to about three minutes. So, Ms. Kent, how did we do? Okay?
We did good.
All right. Well, thank you. God just punished me for being sarcastic to you. So now, call to order, a public hearing at 7:05 on order 146, a petition from National Grid. Ms. Kent?
Megan Scotty. Both please find a petition from National Grid covering installation of underground facilities. If you have any questions, regardless of permit, please contact National Grid. And we have Matt Farren here today.
Mr. Farren, thanks for joining us again. What is it that you would like to do?
Thank you for having, council. Hope you're on your...for this one, this is at an apartment complex, and I guess we've had some repeated complaints and electric service issues out here. So our plan is to replace the primary and as well as replace the transformer within that complex. To do so, we need to replace primary and install conduit across Conant Street. It's about 35 feet from the pole to the pole box that we're going to go to on the customer private property. The method that we plan to use to get that conduit and cable installed is called directional drilling, and that should result in no trench going across the street. I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to do that for this, as it'll obviously keep the street much nicer. And just in case there's going to be any questions on it, no pole work is associated with this job. It's all underground. There'll be nothing to do with pole replacements or double poles.
Great. Thank you, Matthew. And that's always a question about the poles and the double poles, so that's good that you answered it beforehand. Any questions or comments from members of the city council? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Council Feldman, I missed you.
No problem. Thank you. I was wondering what whereabouts on Conant Street is this? Do you know what address for the apartment building? What apartment building we're talking about?
I believe it was close to number 17 on Conant Street. I'm not sure of the complex name. This wasn't a job that I designed. It was somebody else's within the complex.
Okay. I figured.
I'm just representing.
And how is it that it's not going to be disrupting the road? Are you saying that they're not, if it's underground, when you're saying you didn't you didn't think it was going to be touching Conant Street, I'm just, is it parallel to Conant Underground, or is it across the street?
It will be going across the street. Typical conventional methods would have us cut the pavement, trench, remove the old, and install the new. There's a new method that we have. It's called directional drilling, and we're supposed to be able to bore underneath the street completely without having to do any trenching.
Okay. And that's the goal, but you don't you don't know if that's necessarily going to be what happens? Is that what you're saying?
As of right now, it's planned to go that way, and I'm hopeful that it will be able to, but it's construction. Sometimes, you know, you get 10 people that tell you yes, and then you get some one person that says no, and it doesn't happen. So I'm hopeful that that's how it will go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Feldman.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. No other questions or comments. I'll close up public hearing, and then I will ask Ms. Kent to take, I'll entertain a motion to approve National Grid's request, and...do I have a motion to approve?
Yep, so moved.
Second.
Second.
And Ms. Kent, a roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Yes.
Brady?
Yes. No double pole? Yes. Right.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, and I really appreciate that Council Hausman still has his epic sense of humor. Thank you. Moving on, we have a 7:15 public hearing on order number 153. Ms. Kent, could you please read that one?
Order number 153, Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request your approval of a loan authorization to facilitate the ordering of a new ladder truck for the Beverly Fire Department. As you know, our frontline Quint truck is 11 years old, and the backup Quint truck is turning 25 this year. As you remember, two years ago, we applied for a grant to pay for this new truck, and we were denied because even though the older Quint truck was over 20 years old, we were penalized for owning the newer Quint. We then made plans to seek a free cash appropriation from the city council this spring after first having examined our reserves position when the third quarter ended this past April. However, COVID-19 interrupted these plans. Most recently, we discussed seeking a free cash appropriation from the city council upon free cash certification later this calendar year. However, in recognition that we should not ask too much more about older Quint trucks, we come before you tonight in hopes that with your approval of this loan authorization request, we'd be able to order the new truck, ladder truck, in July and receive delivery much sooner as a result. Approval of this request would allow us to legally order the vehicle, which typically takes up to a year to build and deliver. By the time of delivery, we'll have certified the June 30th, 2020, free cash, and we'll have those funds available to rescind the loan order and pay for the vehicle with free cash reserves. This method would allow us to order the truck up for five months sooner and ultimately avoid paying any borrowing costs. To this end, I respectfully request a loan order in the amount of $1.3 million to purchase the truck. Please initiate action on this request that you're meeting this evening by setting a public hearing. The order must be closed at least 10 days to final passage, which it was. Should be referred to the Committee on Finance and Property for a report thereof, and requires a public hearing where the order authorizes the issues of bonds. It will require a 2/3 vote of the city council, attaches to this committee, which is the congested loan authorization language. Concili yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And we do have our Finance Director, Brian Ailes, here, as well as Mayor Cahill. Would one of you like to, gentlemen, like to introduce this, or talk about it a little?
Sure. I'll speak first, Mr. President, not to repeat what Mrs. Kent just read, because you don't need that, but I'll just say, you know, thank you for your consideration. Excuse me, give Mr. Ailes a chance to speak, but first, I want to recognize and thank Chief Carter, who was with us in the meeting, as well as Deputy O'Connor, both of whom have done a lot of great work on this, on articulating, explaining the need for the new ladder truck, and also in doing a lot of preliminary work to get us to a design. So I thank both of them and their colleagues for the work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ailes?
Yes, I would just like to add and reemphasize a portion of the mayor's communications that Mrs. Kent read to you just a second ago. The intent here is to authorize or request authorization of a loan order. This is basically the vehicle that will allow us to issue a PO for the truck and begin to order the truck. We don't intend to make payment until we receive delivery of the truck, and at that point, we should have sufficient free cash available that we could use those funds in lieu of this loan authorization to make payment truck. So it will require not only an approval of the loan authorization this evening to allow us to order it, but it will also require that the administration come back before this council in the fall upon free cash certification and request a transfer of the free cash dollars in lieu of rescinding this loan order at that time. So it will require two votes.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. And before I go to the question here, from the members of the city council, I'll go to our budget analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry is here with us, as he has been throughout the whole spring and summer. Mr. Perry, you did write a memo on this. Do you want to share your thoughts? Please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Very quickly, I did write to the council back on June 30th about this. I am recommending to you that you do support the request the administration. It does accelerate by five months to get the ladder truck onboard. I personally went down there last January and inspected the equipment, and not that I'm an expert on ladder trucks, but it was pretty obvious the condition of the equipment was pretty bad, and I do feel it's a public safety factor. The only concern I had about this request, which Mr. Ailes has convinced me was not going to occur, was if we went out for a loan order, would there be any borrowing cost? And there's not going to be borrowing cost. He was able to work with the bond council pro bono, basically, to get this up and running. And I think it's a good idea to do this, because it accelerates it that, and I don't see any borrowing cost. So, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I think it's a good idea to do this, to get the equipment in quicker, and it would be my recommendation, as your budget analyst to the council, to do this, but please understand, as Mr. Ailes indicated, you will have to come back in November. The plan all along was to use free cash. The administration put that off because of the COVID-19 issues and not not being certain as to what was going on that was being considered this spring, but now we're going to do it in this manner. And again, it has my support, and I'm willing to have to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Let's go to Councilor Rotundo, please.
Mr. President, actually, I have a couple of questions to the chief or to the deputy chief. In regards to the truck, is it a straight ladder? Is it going to be similar to the Quint that we currently have? And then the other question is, is the truck that you're proposing to purchase, how would it fare on our roads? I know there were some modifications with the Quint several years back with the station. Do you see that there'd be a problem with this new fire truck?
And I know we have A.J. Patronzio and Peter O'Connor from the Fire Department. Would either one of you would like to take a crack at that question?
Well, we also have chief.
I know. I haven't seen him.
I'm on the phone. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're on the phone? Okay. I got you here, Peter, top on the phone. Chief Carter, thank you.
Yes, so it's a straight ladder, and as far as the length of it, it's about six inches shorter than the truck we have now. It does not have the pumps, so it's about 8,000 pounds lighter. It has no, and the Quint, which is the larger truck, has no problem getting around the street, so this one will have no problem with that. And it gives us about two more feet of reach also.
Council Rotundo?
What's the reach of the ladder, chief?
It's 107 feet.
Thank you.
Council Rotundo, you're up the floor, so if you have other questions? You're good?
That's it, Mr. President. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Council Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go on the record that the, I think the plan moving forward in the fall, I think it's a good one. I know that there's a lot of concerns with COVID, but I think this is a good plan. I want to also want to thank Captain Palm and Deputy Chief O'Connor. I went down and took a look at that ladder truck that was in dire need of repair, and right now, they're having, I believe, a Boston ladder truck in its place. So obviously, this is a great need for our safety, so I was wanting to make sure that I went down there, take a look at it, and I appreciate all, they answered all the questions, and were very supportive of it, and saw the need. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Hausman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I guess my question is addressed to either Mr. Ailes or Mr. Perry, as they may wish to join the question. I gather the plan, we're voting to authorize a loan order, but we're not going to actually exercise any borrowing for this, which is how we're not going to be incurring any borrowing costs. Did I understand that correctly? It's basically showing that the city is behind this. It's not really a symbolic vote, but it is essentially sending a message. Is that the purpose of this vote?
It's actually more than that, counselor. It's actually legally authorizing the administration to commit to spending those funds.
Okay, so however, although there may be legally authorizing, it is not the administration's intention to actually borrow those funds yet at this time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that this stated more clearly than I put it for sure. And in the, Mr. Perry's memo talks about we would certify funds from free cash. What kind of assumptions are you making that assumes we will have free cash to certify when the time comes to, you know, to make that make that application for a certification?
Yeah, very good question. Thankfully, we have reached June 30th, so we have a very good sense as to where our positive revenues may be at the June 30th certification time snapshot. And at this point in time, we think we will have positive revenue variances of about $1.6 million. We also, as you'll recall, when COVID began to emerge, the mayor was very, very wise in putting in some spending restrictions throughout local government on discretionary spending, which ultimately would force some of unspent funds back into free cash, ultimately to be certified. So we've been very mindful of protecting the city's overall fund balance through this kind of uncertain times of the pandemic, and as a result, we expect free cash to be very near what it was certified at last year. So effectively, not a dip in the undesigned fund balance or the free cash balance, and that at the end of last year was at 9.2 million. So that would give me reason to feel confident that we have sufficient funds to be able to rescind this loan order in the fall, as well as, and you'll recall, we have other commitments that we've made prior to today related to the police station, as well as some other smaller projects that are that are needing some funds, such as the library HVAC, and maybe there might be one that's slipping my mind right now, but effectively, I feel there's sufficient funds available once the free cash officially gets certified to deal with this, as well as the other issues.
So the, to make sure I understand, there will be no borrowing for this. This is going to be paid outright at the time free cash is certified, with a balance left over of free cash for some of these other expenses. So it will not change our debt ratio at all, correct? In terms of bond agencies looking at us?
Counselor, that is the intent. However, because it's authorizing us to go spend this money, if the council in the fall decided they would not support a transfer of free cash to rescind the loan order, having already committed the funds, we at that point legally may be required to borrow the funds. But that would not be my recommendation. My recommendation would be to use the free cash to rescind the loan at that time. But there is still a official vote that needs to take place.
Right. So it's clear that as the council has done on other matters in the past, say, for example, the police station, is that the council today is binding in effect or endorsing a plan which they, we sort of assume will bind us down the road several months from now. And so we have to remember that for several months from now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And Counselor, if I may just throw you into, quickly, I have sat with the Finance Director reviewing the year in closings a little bit, and I share his confidence. We can never guarantee anything, but I am fairly confident, as your budget analyst, I believe, we'll have a number of eight to nine million. Hopefully, it's a little bit better than I originally anticipated on free cash. I also, and I know it'll be coming up in your next agenda item, this proposal is consistent with the capital expenditure planning that is on board. It is right in the plan, and I actually reviewed today. Hope to get a memo or a charting to you all on this issue, on all the issues there. But financially, I think it's the right approach. What you're basically doing is accelerating the ordering of this five months in advance and getting it into the city sooner rather than later. So financially, as your budget analyst, I'm comfortable with it. I think they're taking the right approach, and I'm confident we'll have enough free cash to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Yeah, I'm confident in the assessment as a public safety matter that there is a need to do this, replace this truck. So I have no doubts in that at all, and it seems to me that, you know, financially, especially given the endorsement of our budget analysts, this is a sound financial move for the city as well as a necessary public safety vote. So thank you very much for your question, for your answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hausman. Council Freides?
Thanks, Mr. President. Quick question for the chief. You know, with the retirement of the long-term mechanic and probably the departure of some of his institutional knowledge on some of the equipment, and with it being now performed by the motor pool, are we seeing a learning curve, or is a big truck a big truck, and it's seamless? Thank you.
I wouldn't say a big truck is a big truck, but I would say it's seamless. They hit the ground running, and we've been working with them closely, and they're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, Council Freides. And Council Ames?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have two questions. The first is to the budget analyst. I was wondering if you had calculated how much money you had had the city had been able to hold back to cut through June 30th?
Mr. Perry?
I'm sorry, Counsel, it came in broken up. Could you ask the question again, please?
Absolutely. Sorry about that. I was just wondering if the administration, Mr. Ailes had mentioned that you had, the mayor and the administration had administered a bunch of cuts starting in March. mayor and the administration had administered a bunch of cuts starting in March, and I was just curious if there was a dollar amount of cuts through the end of the year that had, that you knew what the dollar amount was.
I believe that Mr. Ailes indicated they were looking at approximately $160, am I correct, Brian can correct me on that, of turnbacks from the various holding of the budgets, but I would actually, I think that was the number, Brian?
It'll be in excess of 2 million. However, we will, we are still running warrants, and we still are doing period 13 adjustments, so the final number is yet to be determined. That's the whole process of certifying that we go through over the next month or so.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to ask the chief to please just speak to the fact that this is great. I think that you're replacing this piece of equipment. And of course, since, you know, the building stock in the city has changed, you know, since the last time you bought a truck, and just to speak to the fit of the truck to the city today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Ames.
Yes, thank you, Counsel. For us, it's a big asset, because when we had three trucks in, 90% of the time, we, the ladder truck was not available for their primary job, which is to conduct search and rescue, ventilation, and forcible entry. So with this truck, they'll be assigned to that, and when we pull up to any type of an incident, that's going to be their job. Where in the past, because of the lack of firefighters on car, on the scene at that time, you have to go mainly with fighting the fire and do search and rescue at the same time. So this gives us the capability, especially with, with the higher buildings and, and the building that's been going on without, throughout the city. It's something we needed very much, and I would really want to thank the mayor and the council for supporting this, and everyone that has been on board, Finance Director Ailes, for all his work, and Mr. Perry, and the people on the Fire Department, Deputy O'Connor and Deputy Petronzino have been huge on this. So we've all been working and working with the mayor closely on this and explaining just what the ladder is needed for, and he has agreed that for a safety standpoint, this is what we need.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks, Mr. President. And just to put a bit of a wrap on, on the staffing, as Chief said, when, when there was a ladder truck before the city bought the two Quints over the last 25 years, you really need, you really need four Qs in order to have the ladder truck on the street. And what we've done collectively, in part thanks to the two Homeland Security Grants over the last, what did you say, Chief? Eight years or so, seven, eight years? Two rounds of Homeland Security Grants that have allowed us to add four firefighters with each grant. Now, initially, those grants paid a significant percentage and then declining over a few years, and now we entirely pay for those positions. But that's allowed us to bring additional firefighters in. It's allowed us to increase the size of the groups so that we're able to staff four vehicles on a regular basis. We're making that commitment with the purchase as well. And I think that's consistent with the, with the, you know, the increase in growth of total residential units in the city. It is important to also understand that, and Chief, you'll remind me, the older Quint is the, is the taller of the ladders, the 105, and the newer Quint is the 75 foot?
No, the older Quint is the 75. That's the 25-year-old Quint. And the 2009 is the 105.
All the better. So when the new ladder truck comes in, the two trucks will be 75 foot and 107 foot. I'm sorry, they'll be 105 and 107. So they'll both be, you know, have, have greater capacity to get to higher stories. I think that, you know, that's an important piece of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. If nobody from the council has any questions or comments, I'll go to members of the public. Are there any members of the public that have joined us that would like to speak about this proposal? Okay. Hearing no further questions or comments, I will close our public hearing, and then I will entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request. So moved.
Second.
Second.
In a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Yes. That cap passes 9:00. Thank you to Chief Carter, Arthur Fitzpatrick, A.J. Petronzio, Peter O'Connor, all for being with us tonight, and also thanks to our Police Chief, John LaLasher. He's here also tonight. Moving on, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting that was held on Monday, July 7th, 2020. So moved.
Second.
Second, in a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo? Inwansy.
Question, am I supposed to accept this even though I wasn't at the meeting last week?
I'm sure. I'm sure you read the minutes that, that were prepared so that you can approve if you thought they were.
Correct, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rotundo.
I do, thank you. And yes.
All ready to do the right thing. So we're good with the minutes. Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order Number 162, Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully submit to the 2020 Capital Expenditure Plan pursuant to Section 6-8 of City Charter. The document contains narratives on the city's capital needs that will likely need to be addressed in the future. Also contained within the document are important schedules outlining estimate costs along with potential financing obligations over the next 10 years. I hope you found the document informative and helpful as we work together in planning for our city's future. Concili yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill, anything to add before I refer this off?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'd refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property, and maybe in September, hopefully, we'll be all back at City Hall meeting live, and we can have a Finance and Property meeting to discuss that. So counselors, there's your summer reading assignment, the Capital Expenditure Plan. You sound about as excited as my kids do when they got their summer reading also. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order Number 163, Application to Renew the Fortune Teller License for Sophie Anapopoulos at 11 Sunset Drive. It's a renewal.
Not bad on the name, Ms. Kent, very good. It is a renewal. Ms. Andrea Anapopoulos has been the city's lone fortune teller for quite some time, thanks to Counsel Marine Trubataris. I would entertain a motion to approve that renewal.
So moved.
Second.
In a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy.
Yes, and before I entertain a motion to adjourn tomorrow night, we do have a special meeting. We have a couple of appointments to the Conservation Commission to approve for Mayor Cahill, and we'll also discuss the late files supportive of declaring racism a public health issue in Beverly, Mass., which Counsel Flowers and Rand presented tonight. Does anybody have anything else to add before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Counsel Ames?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to quickly make an appeal to the mayor to let him know that I've been hearing from quite a few residents and have personally seen quite a bit of trash on our parks, and make an appeal to perhaps get some of the barrels back up there, because I think people are really depending on these parks. And while the best system is carry-in, carry-out, I'd hate to, you know, I think it's becoming problematic, and that's it. I don't, you know, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Ames. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kent, roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy.
Yes, thank you, everyone.